Well, good morning, everyone. And thank you for turning up at 9:00 AM after the conference dinner. Well done. Great effort. It's been great delight to welcome you to this session, which is about a collaboration that's recently started between ONS and the Data Science Campus as part of ONS and the Alan Turing Institute. And what we've got today are three extremely exciting, quite different papers that are starting to come out of that collaboration, which is very much in its early days. So this is kind of an interesting time to get feedback and get your thoughts on where the work is going. But also just to tell you about some really cool stuff that's going on. And I say really cool stuff because what's happening in this collaboration is the teams are really bringing methods right from the frontier of data science, as it's happening out there in the world, or mathematics and statistics. Those developments right on the frontier, and they are trying to bring them into products and models and analysis that really, really speaks to what ONS does and how we deliver value for the public. So I think it's an incredibly exciting collaboration because the quicker we can get that pipeline of frontier methods into production and actually serving people, the better we are doing in our remotes ONS. So I think it's really exciting. And you know, effectively, innovation is the only way that we are going to develop as well. So we need to get better at innovation. And I think the difficulties that we've had to overcome to get this partnership right, where we've got lots of, actually lots of universities involved, because some people are not just affiliated with Turing, but they're home universities as well. And we've got ONS and we've got Sense of Data. I think it's a really good model for how we can collaborate between ONS and other institutions as well. So really exciting stuff. And ultimately, the idea is that this is going to lead to things that are going to make the work be more efficient or to do more. And ultimately, it's all about serving the public good. So very exciting, as I said, early stages. And I won't say any more than that because I think it's more interesting to hear from the speakers. And so I'm going to hand over straight to Francois to tell us about economic networks and transaction data.
Thank you. Thank you. So it's a great pleasure to present this early work. Victor's going to give most of the talk and I'm just going to give some academic introduction. Victor, you're moving the slides, right? So if you can go to the next one, I'm going to skip that. So I wanted to start by asking, you know, with all the supply chain disruptions that we hear about at this time, what would be the dream dataset that we need to understand and, you know, hopefully control a little bit more those supply chains? So I was trying to ask how many firms are there and how many supply chain links are there in the entire world for the global firm-level production network? So there are some estimates. But you might see that there are around 200, 2 million, 200 million firms in the world. So if you say, okay, there are about 10 links per firm, it's a number I made up because I think it's more than one and it's less than 100. You're right, but you know, about 2 billion links. So, you know, it's a big dataset, but it's not overwhelming either. So it's something that we can think about and that we can target. So this is the dream dataset, what is the available data. So imagine you go through the world academic literature that has published papers on firm-level production networks. And for each of those papers, you look at how many firms are there, how many links are there? And you try to ask, okay, if I had this on my computer and I could merge everything, what share of the entire global firm-level production network would I have? And the answer is something like 1% of 2% probably. So this is a small part, but this is already enough to learn quite a lot. And so how do we get the missing, let's say, 98%? So I think there are two challenges. The first one is to get more data, and that means real data, but also possibly reconstructed data. So use methods of reconstruction. The second challenge, which is much less well-appreciated, is to harmonize those datasets to make them comparable and compatible with national accounting objectives.
The heart of policymaking is an understanding of the numbers that feed into that process.
Thank you. So getting more data, there are several types of sources for those firm-level production networks. One is VAT data, so for instance, in Belgium, there's a one data set, Hungary, Ecuador, a couple of countries. In the UK, Victor, we'll talk about the dataset from payment systems. As you can imagine, it's a quite different source of data. Then you have data from disclosures, so publicly listed firms need to disclose their large customers, for instance, surveys in some countries, credit ratings, which is a really good dataset. In Japan, that comes from industry agencies, trade-related data, and other industry-specific things like psychoanalysis. So all these datasets are very, very different. And they will not cover everything, you need network construction methods. So that means guessing what are the firms that are missing, guessing what are the supply chain relationships that are missing, conditional on knowing that a relationship exists, making a guess what are the weights, and for the quantity, so reconstructing the world.
Yeah, it's quite familiar.
Put out, put national accounts a table, so that the flows in particular to value addition. So next slide. So I wanted to show here something that we did. We took a dataset, so FactSet is a leading commercial dataset, and Ecuador is an administrative data. And here what's interesting is if you hide two-thirds of the dataset and you train on the remaining firm and you try to make predictions on the links in the observed data, you can do a pretty good job in each of these datasets. Because if you know the distance between the firms, their industries and their relative size, you can make a pretty good guess at whether two firms are in a business relationship. What's very interesting is if you try to instead train your algorithm on FactSet and then predict Ecuador or the other way around, and there the performance drops completely. And yes, it's because, you know, the economy of Ecuador is different from the developed economies that are covered by FactSet. But I don't think that's the main reason. The main reason is that those datasets are collected by different methods and they are not harmonized. So can you, next slide please, Victor? And so that's why one of the biggest challenges to achieve this dream dataset is really deal with national accounting rules and harmonization. So here I'm citing a paper, some of you might have seen the ONS Data Science Seminar by Stephen Anson, where what they did is to try to reconstruct household consumption from data set, from payment data from a Spanish bank. And that was really inspiring because on the one hand, they showed that they could do a good job at it. On the other hand, they also showed all the detailed steps that they had to take to achieve this. And so, you know, an account, a bank account is not necessarily a household. Households have multiple bank accounts, you need to deal with that. When you see a transaction, is it a savings transaction or is it consumption? How do you deal with rent times? Sometimes you see them, sometimes you don't see them, you see the mortgage, you have to do owner-occupier inference. And then classifying outlets, because ultimately, the benefit of such microdata, one of the benefits would be to have, to understand consumption baskets at a very, very detailed level. So it's quite inspiring. And for production networks, we think it's going to be the same story, but worse actually. So first of all, we have to distinguish individuals and businesses. I think Victor's done a great job at that, he will talk about this. But then other things like investment versus intermediates, trade and transport margins, financial intermediaries, the public sector is there, headquarter effects with firms paying from one bank account, and the payment delays and trade credits. So with all those challenges in mind, it's clear that it's really good to do this project with ONS. And I'm going to leave it to Victor now.
Thank you very much, Francois, just to check that everyone can hear me. And also, just to start my brief tour around the partnership and the work that we have been doing with data providers. So we started January 2022, secondment into VocLink, which is a Mastercard company. And our ambition was to generate business-to-business data that could be used to understand in near-real time a bit more about the UK supply chains, but also trying to understand business performance. And also what we wanted to do is to be able to use that data for national accounts and think about input-output tables and other estimates that we would want to also be able to produce with that data. So we started that proof of concept working with VocLink. And VocLink is a company within the UK that manages the direct debits and the faster payments. And we were able to work inside VocLink, which was really good to have access to that rich and very instructive data. So the reason why we did that is because we noticed that there was a gap. So we have a gap within government, which is on trying to understand timely data and trying to have timely data for supply chains, also business payments, and especially business-to-business, which is something that is very difficult. And we only extract from survey data. And what we have access is usually either very limited or very aggregated. So it doesn't actually allow us to link that information with other data sources that we might want to link. And that creates a gap in terms of informing policy, in terms of providing information to government when we have a recovery from COVID and we have the cost of living. So we need to be proactive and we need to try to find other data sources that might be able to help us with that. So we started a conversation with financial and banking groups. And we started thinking about whether they will be able to share some data with us. And we know for, we know that usually these banks and financial providers are very reluctant in sharing data because this data is really, really, really sensitive. So we need to start building that trust and to make sure that this data is being used for public good. But also we're keeping all the sensitivity of the data and we're keeping everything safe. So what I'm going to talk next is about our journey. So what we did, which we were not expecting to go inside VocLink and to actually be able to quickly generate some data because the data is very, is actually very instructive. So we knew that we were going to have access to that data, but still we'll need to do linkage with other data sources to make sure that we were able to generate the right insights. So this is just an example of a module that we created. So we were provided with more than 20,000 names of companies. And we were asked to link that file to Companies South Data, which is a business register, which is self-reported. It was not ideal because it's self-reported, but it was the first step for us to start linking and to start generating industry classification that then we'll be able to use to link and compare to other data sources. And this is just an example of how the module works. The model is going to be refined. So we start with a string from that, from that list with the names of the companies, which in this case is just ONS. And then we do cleaning, removing capitals, removing spaces, et cetera, et cetera, just data cleaning. And then what we do is we compare that data with also a clean version of the Companies South Data to see whether there are matches. And what we can see in the top, in the top line is we have 100% match because our system by cleaning the capitals and the expert that should not be there, it actually provides 100% match. And then at the bottom, we have something that we know for sure is not a match and something that we will not use as a classification. So for the purpose of the exercise, we all assume to be a full match every time that we would have 100% agreement rate. Everything else we did, actually clerical work, just to make sure that we were able to refine that linkage process. So the second stage, which is actually going to be inverted when we start scanning and linking bank accounts, it's called an account classifier. What is the account classifier? So in VocLink, we have access to 128 million accounts. And the first thing that we need to do is we need to understand whether we are talking about business accounts or personal accounts. And we will only want to analyze business accounts, we don't want to analyze personal accounts. First, because if we don't need to analyze personal accounts. And second, because we will need to spend a lot of our time and a lot of our efforts to link business data with Companies South or another business register. So we started working with VocLink and Mastercard experts in trying to set up a few variables that we could use to identify either personal accounts and business accounts. And we have, here we have two examples of something that we can use. So in VocLink data, in the payment data, there is what we call the RTI flag, which is a pay RTI. So everyone which is paid via payee, that payment issues an RTI flag to the government. And this is just for purpose of taxes. And that flag is captured. And we all, and we know that only personal accounts, only individuals can receive payroll using the RTI. So therefore, we can use this as a way to classify an account as a personal account. There are others, such as benefits, state pensions, et cetera, et cetera. On the other side, we also have specific flags that we know they only apply to businesses. So I'm thinking about the ability to collect direct debits. No one outside businesses can do that. The ability to pay direct credits is also something that businesses are only able to do that. And the reason why we did this is because this will immediately eliminate millions of accounts. And that's what we use a stage two. But because we cannot classify everything with the flags, with the RTI flags, with the direct debits, et cetera, et cetera, because they don't exist and not everyone receives via pay RTI. We also developed a machine learning module, which is using, uses random forest, which instead of looking for specific flags, actually uses the payment performance. And the type of payment performance that we are looking at are values and volumes, for instance. How many relationships one account has with other accounts, et cetera, et cetera. So we, instead of using the normal flags, we'll use the payment performance to classify the accounts as business accounts or personal accounts. And this is what we did. For the phase two and phase three of the project, which is moving from the small proof of concept that we did, we'll start with stage two and three. And then we will, and then once we have identified all the business accounts, we'll do the classification using Companies South or another business register. So just give you an idea about, once we have identified businesses, once we have linked the businesses to Companies South or a business register, then we are able to generate the SIC, the standard industrial classification, which will allow us to compare with other datasets or other insights that are aggregated at the same level. In this case, for the proof of concept, we aggregated the dataset to SIC2, which is two-digit level. And the reason why we did that is because the data was too disclosive at SIC5 level. Once we start expanding the sample, we will be aggregating to SIC5 and region. And the reason why we are working with region and not with local authority at this stage is because the bank account information does not hold a very correct geography variable. So we need to understand whether we can use a sword code or other variables to actually create a proxy for region or local authority. So just going back to the data. So once we access the payment data, these are the variables that we are able to extract and to generate data based on. So we have direct debits, which are companies collecting payments from firms or individuals. So thinking about paying my mobile phone, paying my mortgage, et cetera, et cetera. So that's all direct debits. Direct credits, companies transferring funds to firms or individuals. So a company pays someone or another firm, they can do that via direct credit. A specific subset of the direct credit is what we call direct credit RTI. So our employer, if they pay us via pay RTI, they will use the direct credit to pay us. And then we have also another dataset, which is really, really insightful, which is around the direct debit cancellation and whether specific direct debits, they were not able to be collected because there were not enough funds in the account. So just going back to the analysis, and this is just an overview of the initial analysis that we did. So once we extract all that information and we join direct debits and direct credits, we can create something that we call the flow of funds. And in this case, we are just looking about flow of funds between regions, that's one. And this is a very small dataset, but we can see in this case that London is very heavy in this SANKI diagram. The reason why this is happening is because we noticed in that sample of data, the headquarters effect. So the data and the companies that we were provided, as a service user, at least that we were provided, they've mostly mentioned the headquarters location, which is something that we know and we will be correcting for the future. So previously, I was showing you about regionals and flows of funds between regions. We can also do the same between SICs. But in this case, this is a very specific use case. This is an example of UK store retail that started the liquidation process in December 2019 and ceased trading in May 2020. And we can see that from our data as well. Data shows that when they start the liquidation, the payments from the company, they actually start going to zero and they stop and they cease after May. The next one, the next example still related with the same company is we tried to understand. So imagine that we want to understand how, if a company dissolves, how that's going to affect different regions and different sectors. This is something that we can see from these data. This is just a very small example about payments from that specific company to two regions. In this case, we have the right one, Wales, and the left one, Northern Ireland. And what we can see is that that company is very relevant for all the trade with Wales. What we need to account for is that we are talking about a very small sample. So only once we have the full 5 million businesses mapped, we'll be able to actually extract real insight. But this is something that we really wanted to share with you, just to show the potential of this data. We know that our data has limitations. And one of the limitations and one of the big challenges is that we need to be able to identify and distinguish between personal accounts and business accounts. And this is very difficult because we need to use fields that are often truncated. So there is a limit to the number of characters, the number of letters. So that's something that we need to, that you need to be able to work. We also know that this data has seasonality and also it has what we call the payment flag.
Victor, it'd be really good if you could wrap up in the next minute, just so we have time to take a couple of questions.
Just finishing, thank you, Arthur. And the other thing that I've mentioned is about the headquarters effect. The last thing is around that we are only covering UK transactions because this is a scheme that is only used in UK. And at this stage, we only talk about direct debits and faster payments. And this is all, thank you very much, everyone. And happy to progress.
Fantastic, thank you, Victor. Really interesting stuff. And we're going to go to some questions now, and we might get some questions from line two. So we'll take a couple of quick questions after each talk. But if there's extra time at the end, we can come back to things. And so no one's got their hand up. Oh, go ahead. There is a roaming mic coming to you.
Hi, Victor. Thanks very much for that. Mari Spowidge from University of Strathclyde. And I know we're probably going to be talking more about this at some point over the next few days, hopefully. And I'm interested in the reducing the headquarters effect. And is the idea then to use the distribution of local units potentially to?
Yeah.
You know, so I can imagine that a company-to-company transaction would then become a many-to-many in terms of regionalizing. Is that the idea that you're going to be looking at to reduce?
It is, it is, Mari. So we are, we are, we are thinking, we are planning to use IDBR, which is our business register, and to a portion, and to create a method that will enable us to correct for this effect. But as you've mentioned, we'll be talking within the next few days just to discuss what would be the best approach to this.
Fab. So I don't think there are any question, other questions from the floor, but I do have one for both of you, which is a bit more kind of zoomed out, which is, you know, what kind of analytical questions are we going to be able to answer with this if we get it right, that we can't answer today? So how is this going to expand what we can do at a high level?
Francois, would you like to start?
Yeah, I can. Yeah, so to give an example would be, for instance, Brexit. For sure, it's, you know, constrained a little bit more the way supply chain links are formed. And yeah, so that would probably give an idea on, you know, how often firms are changing their suppliers? Is this something that we can really expect from them to adapt very quickly? Another example would be today with the energy crisis. That's the same. If you, so here in the UK, less concerned by that. If you were to cut Russian gas, how quickly can you expect firms to rewire the supply chain? And then general diffusion of shocks, so in the case of climate events, for instance, there are a couple of papers on that. Yeah, these are the two biggest examples that come to mind. I don't know if you have any other one, Victor?
I was just going to add two things that we are trying to add value is around industry by industry input tables that will be able to generate based on this data. And we are trying to do that, we're working to do that just because it will reduce the line between having the data and being able to publish. So this is our next step in terms of the work that we do, that we are doing with this data. So I think that not only about being able to answer and to inform policy as soon as possible, but also to help us with the transformation of national accounts, that's something that we really want to be able to contribute.
Well, that sounds fantastic. And thank you so much for telling us about it. And we're going to move on now to our next talk, which is going to be presented by Julia. And we're going to hear about Nowcasting with signature methods. So Julia, over to you.
Thank you, Arthur. Let me... Okay, I hope everybody can see my slide. Can I minimize this so we can see very well? Okay. Good morning, everybody. I'm Julia Mantouane, I'm a postdoc at the Alan Turing Institute. And I work on this project in Nowcasting with the ONS and also Data Science Campus. So what we are trying to do in this project is to have some Nowcasting of several variables using signature methods. So this is our main contribution. The reason why you want to use signatures is because, uh, of course, it will, it will be nice to have timely and ground running now cast of key UK economic variables. So the target variables that we would like to now cast during this project are also the income, also the expenditures and consumer prices. In order to achieve this, uh, we will use a variety of complex data sources, including surveys, admin data, large and real, uh, near real time data. And however, this dataset come with some complex issues that we need to solve. Such as, you know, different sampling frequencies or, you know, complex mixed frequency, mixed data patterns. So we want to build and share an understanding of methodology that are appropriate for these specific scenarios. And then be able to provide government and businesses and of course also academics with high frequency information on these key macroeconomic variables. So what during my presentation, you will, you're gonna see some technical views on how what signature meters is. Uh, and then two case studies, one in using simulated data and one with the real data. And finally, we conclude. So let me go back a little bit on the issue of now casting. So we know that when we have a real time series, we can exhibit some nonlinearity persistence in the data. Or, you know, you can have abrupt changes in the economic that disturb the relationship between indicator variable and the target variables. However, these two issues are not new to the literature. We have several ways of dealing with these, like we time varying parameters or, you know, other complex methods. However, uh, in the case in which you want to use some irregular sample time series or more complex mixed frequency, mixed frequency structure, then you're gonna come in on some problems. Because maybe you have different lengths of time series, or you have a lot of mixing data that are that are coming different patterns during the time series that you have. Or, you know, you have reference period that have a different length. So these are specific cases when you use new sources of data such as web script data. So the result that so the the way that we try to answer these challenges is through the application of signature methodology to now casting. So um signatures already are quite developed and they look, and they seem to be very effective in other in other disciplines such as astronomy, medicine and finance. And they are a general approach to capture relationship from mixed frequency and irregular sample time series data. So what we are trying to do in this project is to apply the signature methodology to our to our problems that we face in now casting. So let me go a bit, a little bit in details of what signature methods are. Okay, so here you see a lot of math. I'm gonna try to walk you through this. So you see X is the variable that the time series that you have. So it can be either the variable that you want to now cast or um the predictors that you have. So of course you you have only um dataset, right, of this variable. So from A to B, so those are two, let's say there are two point in time. So a signature is just um an integral of these, of these, of this X that we assume. So what we are gonna call this is a clinical path. So I'm assuming that my dataset is a continuous path. And I can derive some integrals on this. So we can have, so basically you can see that I'm integrating over A and to like an appointing time. And I can only, so this is the signature of variable K. I can also do a double integrated integral. So here you see that I take the integral of my signatures over variable L. So what is this means? Like, why, why do we think this is useful for now casting? So we think this is useful because we can, um, we can get, we can extract from my time series some timely relationship on the single time series and also multiple variable um co-integration of those. So similarly, uh, we can define then the path as an infinite collections of such terms. So ideally, I can compute these signatures terms as many as I like. And then these uh collections of of terms will be will be a way that I have to define my path. So um, this is a visual interpretation of what um a path is and a si- and a signature is. So imagine that um you have this dataset that has several points, okay, so A, B, C and D. Uh, and imagine that you can, of course, draw a path, a continuous path over this. So this is the red, the red line. So what signatures is trying to do is um so imagine that you have, for example, variable one and variable two. You then you can calculate the signatures of one and two and get the area above this this line. The similar way, uh, if you, if I compute the signature of variable two over variable one, then you see that I have this um, this area here below my path. So however, um, so for us, the problem, the issue is a little bit more complicated because of course we have time and also um the the different variables. So let me recap why we think this is, uh, it can be very informative for us and a very good application for now casting. It's because we we know that signals was captured temporal correlation of single and multiple times series. We also know that the approximate continuous function on path quite well. And then, which means that we cannot adopt linear models to capture non-linealities in the data. Because the non-linealities are captured by the signature terms, and then I can just use a linear model to with my signatures as predictors, as we, as we did. And then, of course, it can be used very flexible with regular sampling patterns. So the way that we use signatures um is the following. So look, imagine that your equation four is your predictive regression, okay? So Y T is the variable that you want to now cast. And you see, I call it low frequency variable in consistency with the literature. So I have low frequency variable that will be now cast with high frequency variable X. So what I, what I did was I compute, we computed signatures terms from the predictors. Uh, and of course, I remember that I told you, you can have an infinite collection of these terms. So we, of course, truncate. So we decided what to truncate the signature terms. Uh, we did up to order three. And then we use these signatures um as as a predictor for my now cast Y. However, um, here we find out that we had like a little bit of a problem because as as ma- as many predictor variables you have uh as more signatures you have, and it's not a linear relationship, but it's a it's a higher proportional relationship, which means that for each variable, I can compute several uh signatures, which means that if I have so which means that the number of predictors is increased quite quickly. So what I have to do is, uh, we have to decrease this uh, this number, this numerosity of my in my regression using Lasso. So we use several um, several approaches. Lasso seems to be the most efficient one. Um, so, so this is how, how we did. I'm gonna show you how this look like. So I walk you through some details in signature. So this is just of course, it's made, it's very complicated. So um, I didn't have the time to show you everything. But I, I wanted to show you how it looked like in um some applications. So the first case study um is, is using a simulated, is simulated data. So we would like to see how signatures perform when data has different sampling patterns. So why we are trying, we want to do this? So first, because we know that signals are quite can can deal with different sampling patterns. Uh, and second, because um, because in other traditional not now casting models, it's very, uh, it's it's actually not very easy to deal with this problem. So I would like to showcase you how how it works in these specific cases. So in the first scenario, we only, we are, we have a very typical exercise where we have mixed frequency in the data. But the data is regularly sampled. So for example, you have quarterly data and monthly data or monthly data and weekly data. So the frequency at which you collect the data is regular. Uh, the second scenario is irregular sampling. So imagine that then you, yeah, you don't know when uh, you you cannot really model the the frequency at which you get some new information. So the similarity data comes from this quite simple D G P. So you see, of course, that's, so I you, I want to now cast Y using X. Uh, X is a function of of Y and then, of course, my um algorithms are independent. So I'll show you how this look like. So you see in the uh axis, in the X axis, you see the number of draws that I that I get. And then, uh, of course, the true value, this is what I simulate and the prediction that I can get with signatures. So the first panel at at your left is the first case. So you have regular mixed frequency data for predicting Y. Uh, and we have this pattern of mixed frequencies. So we have a seven day, thirty days frequency on the two variables. So uh, you see here that signatures was quite, quite well. So you can, you can see clearly how um the prediction that we get from this model uh fits quite well the data. However, you can also see the same, um, the same conclusion. I can draw, I can draw the same conclusion from the second graph on the right when I have a regularly sampled data. And you can see, you can still see how well I am fitting the data. So this is quite encouraging for us because it looks, it looks like a simulating data that from the signatures, I can actually use very regularly sample data and still be able to get a quite good prediction. Okay, let me go on the second case study. So here we are trying, we are applying our methodology on now casting also income. So this is a quiet, so we basically use a quiet um traditional exercise. So we have, we want to now cast outside income with a limited set of indicators. Our estimation sample was from quarter three two thousand and four until quarter one two thousand and fourteen. And then our evaluation period goes from two thousand and fourteen Q two until just before two thousand and twenty. So of course, we have to cut off pandemic for for now. Then uh, we compute the now casting three specific horizons. So T zero um is just the end of my quarter. So um, also the income is published quarterly. So we imagine to do run this exercise at T plus zero, so the last day of the the quarter. Uh, fifteen days after that and forty five days after this reference quarter. So why did we choose these days? So of course, we choose these days based on how uh, what is the frequency at which we see the predictors published. We compare the signature methods that I show you before with bridge, we are there and the Midas models. So the result I'm gonna show you are very, are quite initial result. And the this result will change, both because we, we're gonna increase, we're gonna change the dataset we use and also we need to refine the models. Okay, so this is um, this is the data that I use. Uh, so you see the variable that I want to now cast is the compensation of employees, which is the component of the the GDP. Of course, it's quarterly and it's published with a forty five days delay. Okay? So we would like to gain some, we would like to beat this um publication delay using um more timely available variables. So we chose some that are monthly of a public, published on a monthly basis. Uh, and that they come at different point in time. So for example, you see that the conf- the consumer confidence index uh is available at the end of the month. So by each um, by each now cast horizon, I can see all of the information of that quarter. This is not the same for other variables. So for example, industrial production. Uh, at the end of the quarter, I only have information about the first month of the quarter. Uh, and then I, I have the total information only after forty five days. Then I have our RTI, RTI average aggregate pain. Uh, and then I have some L F S data. So L F S data is also available quarterly. However, um, since this is, uh, I mean, we we assume that will be available internally to us quite more timely and we assume a fifty days delay. So that's why you can see uh L F S data here as well. Uh, okay, so this is how it looks like. Uh, so this is the now cast that I have for house and income at T plus zero. The first chart show you the um point now cast. And then the second one is the now cast error. So in uh blue, uh, you see the bridge model, the performance of the bridge model in orange and signatures and in gray the Midas. And the black dots are the realizations. So you can see here already that even if the dataset that I use is regularly sampled, right? You can see that signatures works quite well. Uh, same for T plus fifteen. Uh, if I go in forty five days, uh, I can see here something happening. But it still performs quite, fits quite well the data. And this is a little bit more on evaluation of our now cast. So root means con error and mean absolute error. Uh, you see that the error decrease over over now cast horizon, which means that the more information we have, the better uh we are in now casting. However, you see here, there is still some scope of improvement because we can see that even though in our cast, the with signatures got better with time. Yes, with the still, still the mina, so there is quite big. So we still need to um understand this better. Also, what we would like to do next is to have more, like enlarge our dataset uh of predictors in order to um get more now cast exercises in here, not just three horizon, but a many number of horizons. Okay, so let me just uh conclude. Um, so we wanted to establish an alternative and now casting model framework using signatures that provides an efficient way of handle complex real time issues. So we investigated its performance through simulated data. Uh, so we haven't investigated this yet on real time data, but we will in next steps of this project. So the preliminaries are there because so far are quite um, are quite promising for us. Because we can show in simulation exercise that this works quite well. And we see in our um real time data that it doesn't perform terribly wrong. So it it is still, we still have to refine it, but it's a quite good result we have so far. So um, we want also to apply to other key economic variables, like also the expenditure and customer prices. So maybe there we can explore different patterns of the data and then the different um predictors. Okay, so I think I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Julia. That was fantastic. Really, really interesting paper. And um, you know, I think actually you gave yourself quite a difficult task there, trying to beat the regularly sampled case with a bridge model, which has been around for a very long time and is probably quite refined. So it's actually fantastic to see how far you've got with this in quite a short time. And, you know, I mentioned at the start, this kind of bringing data science techniques right from the frontier straight into solving problems that are important. And I think this is a great example of that. Let's take some questions. Yes.
Hey, uh, thanks. See for interesting. So when you're looking at the signatures, you're kind of extracting some kind of features from some time series and using them to predict the ones you're interested in. I was a bit unclear how you calculate the signature with the missing data. I mean, you're doing some integrals or something, but I mean, maybe you can just kind of recap on that a bit.
Yeah, yeah, of course. So the beauty of signatures is that you compute, you know, you can draw the path by as many observations as you, as you have. So when I compute uh this, this integral, it doesn't really matter if I have missing data, data here, as long as I can order the points and then I can compute. I can compute the uh, the signatures on the, on the continuous path. I can compute the, the signatures on the, on the continuous path that I can draw from that. So the, the way that we did this in the, in the simulator, the simulation exercise is to, so we, we draw regularly sample and then we, we draw some, we draw away some of the information that we had. So you had less data point that you can draw your, your path, but you still have some points that you can do this and you can compute the signatures on.
I, I think it's really worth saying, worth, worth saying that, you know, when we're thinking about new kind of alternative data sources as well, they often are irregularly sampled or there might be missing data or there might be kind of a wide array of, of kind of unusual data with breaks and things. So methods that are really flexible and can adapt to those kind of new alternative data sources are really useful. Martin.
Thinking of the standard forecast combination issue, do you think that maybe there would be gains from combining the forecasts or now casts produced using these methods than those produced using more conventional methods?
Yes, thank you for the questions. Yes, I agree with you. So at this point, we are still trying to have a very good competitive model. So we're still trying to define that. But definitely, I think there will be very useful to have a combination of this model, especially for, especially for, I mean, the problem is that in some cases, you cannot really use your, the standard now casting models. And you need to, let's say, like filter the data or filling the gaps that you have. And then you can compute the now cast with traditional methods, right? So it's very, I agree with you that it will be very interesting to see how the combination works here because I'm expecting, especially in, in time varying set of kind of combination weights. I can see, I would like to see how signature method performs over time. So I'm expecting that maybe some more stable times, some models performs better than signature, some other times signature perform better. So it is definitely one of the step that we want to do, the look forward to in this project. Yeah, however, at the moment I have the feeling that if I combine this, I, I won't get much, much out of that because of the difference in evaluation of the single, of the single models. So yes, I agree.
Any more questions?
Hi, Julia. I was interested in the fact that you said you had to kind of truncate the signature. So I was wondering kind of how you chose, you know, to truncate it out to order three. And if you could, would you ideally not do that? And you said you have kind of dimensionality issue. And I was wondering how many predictors do you actually end up with, you know, before you kind of start removing some?
Yes. Okay, thank you for your question because I was rushing a little bit here. So I'm glad that I have the time to talk a little bit more about this. So we know that we can, we, we can have a definition of the path on infinite collection of these terms. However, we also know that in higher order of signatures, the, the signature terms just go to zero. So you know, the truncation that we did wasn't really, like we selected order three because it was enough to get, you know, to not get signature terms that collapsed to zero. However, yeah, the problem is that, yeah, so I don't remember how many we had specifically, but I, I think it was around like seventy, seventy four, seventy five. And we had six, seven, seven predictors. So you see how it can increase quite quickly. And if I, if I increase the order, it's going to be of course even, even more. But I don't think this impacts quite the result, our result because of the fact that yes, I had an order three was just collapsing to zero. And yeah, we needed to think about how to deal with this problem then in our, in our prediction regression. So yes, this is a very good point. Thank you.
Okay, last call for questions on this paper. Yes, Martin?
Sorry, a second question. I saw that the variable you're trying to predict is compensation of employees. Wouldn't it be perhaps no more worthwhile focusing on household disposable income? Or I mean, you've called it household income, but it's not household income. I'm wondering whether they might be a bit more interested in the measure of household income.
Yes, yes, I agree with you. So we had a long conversation on which variable we should take here for, for, you know, as a representative for house of income. Yeah, I agree with you that disposable income will be more interesting. So we can also have different distribution of, of this, of this data. But yeah, I mean, in the end, we agree on starting with compensation of employees. But you know, these, these models can be run on any, on any target, whatever that you would like to, to now cast. So it really depends on the, on the question you want to answer, I guess. So if for us, we wanted just to start and try to beat the publication delay that we get from the components of the GDP. But of course, if you have another, you know, other variables that you, you think is more interesting to now cast, of course you can apply this. And yeah, but yeah, I mean, I agree with you. It's a very good point because when you have disposable income, then you can also understand a little bit better on the different. I mean, I'm expecting that the distribution of this data point would be very different than, than the compensation of employees. And then yes, maybe have a more, you know, policy interesting, interesting result. Yes, definitely.
We, we, I think, let me just check the time. We can have one more very quick question. Fantastic.
There's also part of the reason why we chose compensation replace was there's real time data really easily accessible for compensation employees. And there's a challenge to get real time data sets for some of the more disaccredited income components. And this is done in real time, so it takes into account the advantages, say, of this, which is really important in that class. So building more real time databases would really help in terms of
Yeah.
Fab. Thank you for that. We'd best move on. Julia, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
We're going to go to our last speaker now, Owen Daniel from Data Science Campus, who's going to talk to us about synthetic data and privacy preservation. Really interesting topic for national statistical institutes.
So good morning. And I should say to begin with, I thought that the data science campus branding was the perfect way to enlighten through to the end of the morning session. So if, if the content doesn't keep you awake, then hopefully the color scheme at least will. And so thank you for letting me speak. I'm going to talk about synthetic data and privacy preservation. And I'm really going to focus on synthetic data part. But, but our team does look at wider use of privacy enhancing technologies as well and welcome questions about the work there. So in terms of overview, I'm going to introduce why we care about synthetic data, a bit about the trade offs when you create synthetic data, how we define privacy and a case study of our current work. And this is a collaboration, like all of the other presentations this morning with the Alan Turing Institute. And that's some of my team members there. I should say, and this is a mission that I probably shouldn't make in front of the audience here, that whilst we are a diverse team in terms of backgrounds, none of us are economists. So having said that, this makes it doubly hard for me to. Well, I will keep going with what I was going to say. So it makes me, it doubly hard for me to sell this to you as a, as an audience who have obviously come to an economics conference. But I will try my hardest to, to show you why you should care about synthetic data as a toolbox. That's me. Yeah, thank you. Brilliant. Okay, so now I've lost. So why is the O N S investing in synthetic data? And more importantly, why should you care as the audience of economists rather than a theoretical folk like me? So synthetic data offers to improve access to data for both internal and external researchers. And more importantly, it's not just about the researchers who use data, it's also about data asset owners. And so how does synthetic data promise to do this? Promises to do it by bringing data into the O N S faster so that we can start researching on novel data sets quicker. And that's through allowing us to sort of test internal data pipelines and hoping also to give researchers access to synthetic data sets whilst they're still waiting to access the final real data that they'll want to run their analysis on. So I imagine that in the audience, we'll probably have quite a lot of people who are experienced with using the secure research service and in future the R D S and who probably have their own stories about sort of the, the time that it takes to go through accreditation. And so the hope of synthetic data is that by lowering the barrier of access to synthetic data, you can start doing your research at an earlier point in time. And maybe also faster, even when you have access to the real data, if that is on a lockdown machine that you can only access in certain circumstances. So what I believe is that everybody in the audience should be really interested because I know that we definitely have some information asset owners in the room and data owners. So you should be thinking, right, somebody might be coming to me in the future and saying, I want to synthesize your data. And what are the considerations I need to take into account to do that? You might be a researcher who's going to find themselves going and using synthetic data. And ultimately, we're all people whose data is collected. And so your information may end up in a synthetic database in the future. Really important at this point that I stress that so far in our research, we're not looking at using synthetic data to actually make decisions. So everything that I say today is really around that enabling access to data faster, but not actually suggesting that we're going to suddenly suggest that there'll be statistics that are based on synthetic databases rather than the real data itself. So I'd like to talk a bit about the classic trade offs when we look at synthetic data. And people often talk about the trade off between utility and privacy. So you can't have a data set which is both really private and really, really useful. And in some settings, neither utility or privacy are actually all that important. And an example of that is testing of internal data pipelines. So you don't need particularly representative data there. You need a data set that's of the same order of magnitude and probably has all of the categorical variables, all of the factor levels represented. But beyond that, you don't necessarily need particularly useful data. So that, that line there is more of a frontier of privacy and utility rather than any synthetic data sets sit somewhere on that line to say data can sit down in the corner. Less frequently talked about is the fact that there's actually a third competing priority, which is explainability. And explainability, I actually perceive as being on an equal footing as the other two. And I think it's less talked about in the academic literature, but in the sort of public sector space, this is really important. And there's two aspects of explainability. If I'm going to persuade a data asset owner to release a synthetic database, they need to be really comfortable that it is safe to be released to what up with the audiences, whether that's really open to the public online or if it's just data that's got fewer restrictions than the raw data. So I have to be able to really explain why I'm not putting any information at risk. But we also need to be able to explain the limitations to the user. So as a user of synthetic data, you need to understand to what extent are the statistics that I'm inferring or pulling out of this data actually representative of what I'll see when I get access to the real data. And of course, privacy, utility and explainability are all fairly ill-defined concepts in their own right. So this isn't an easy question by any means. Towards the first row, so privacy and importantly, synthetic data is not by default private. So for instance, take a database, take the first entry and then just copy that all the way along. You've got a synthetic data set that isn't representative of real data, but you've just identified one person, however many million times. So synthetic data is not private, but a rigorous notion of privacy has been introduced in around two thousand and six. Cynthia Dwork, the first author there is, is sort of perceived to be the, the real founding lady of privacy or rigorous definition of privacy. And that was the definition of differential privacy and its mathematical definition. And in theory, it allows us to reduce conversations about risk appetites when we're releasing data to picking a couple of parameter values. So that's really appealing on paper because you can just sort of simplify and say, okay, what, what value of epsilon, and I'll explain epsilon in a minute, are you happy with? And then differential privacy ensures that we have supremacy. And existing applications, probably most notable is the US Census Bureau, who have moved to releasing their census microdata using differential privacy. So they are in the space of using synthetic data to, to actually be used for curating statistics. And LinkedIn's Audience Engagement API that allows you to sort of see what content people are engaging with. And the COVID nineteen Community Mobility Report. So that's just an example there for, for Glasgow. And here differential privacy again is being used for publication of statistics. And it's an enabler of small area statistics. So what is the differential privacy guarantee? And so differential privacy allows us to explain algorithms clearly, and I'll come back to that on the next slide. But explaining the definition is hard, but I'm going to give it a go. And I'll try and do it in English first and then I'll show some maths just so that this isn't a completely non-technical tool. So here's the heuristic. You're given a choice of opting in or out, including your data in a database. And the classic example that Dwork and her co-authors provide is a study, maybe you're a smoker and you're deciding whether or not you want your data to be included in a research study about the side effects of smoking. And you've got to weigh up whether, whether you actually want your data to be in there and what might be disclosed about you if you choose to opt in. An analysis, so we're going to subject these two data sets to a privacy process, a differentially private one and create two synthetic databases. And the differential privacy guarantee says that the risk of any inference changing because your data was included in the data set is no more than E to the power of a parameter epsilon. And the data asset owner ultimately chooses what value of epsilon they feel is acceptable. And I've given some examples there of what each power of epsilon looks, looks like. And this is where explaining differential privacy gets a bit hard because the recommended values in the sort of current understanding in the research literature is, well, zero is incredibly private because you can see there that the risk of any, well, zero is academic, but at naught point one, the risk of any information changing is one point one. But very quickly, that number gets quite big. So each power of ten is twenty two thousand times more likely. And it's a bit hard to explain to someone, well, what exactly does it mean? I don't find that a very reassuring thing to say that, oh, any, any inference, don't worry, it'll only be twenty two thousand times more likely to happen. And the reality and why that isn't necessarily worrying statistic is you have to remember that this is really at a micro level. So this in a data space, you might say, I've got my synthetic data. What's the probability that rather than the tenth person's age being twenty two, it's twenty three? But otherwise, the data is completely identical. When you're looking at things, events of that micro nature, that scale of differences is actually still slightly academic. And I should say that the census data that's been published is using an epsilon value of eighteen, which is on the order of ten to the power of seven. So even harder to really rationalize what, what that means. So semi formally, just for, for purposes of entertainment, this is sort of the, the formula. So you have a database X and database Y that's the same other than one piece of information removed. You have an algorithm to create synthetic data. You have the outputs M X and M Y. And then the, the final line is, is encapsulating that point about probabilities changing. So considerations when using differential privacy. Importantly, and this is the key selling point of differential privacy. The privacy guarantee holds regardless of any information an attacker may have about you. So it doesn't matter what they hold and that ensures we have privacy preservation for the future as well. So if there's a future data set that gets leaked or, or a new piece of data starts being collected, this guarantee is already future-proofing against future risks. It doesn't however, protect you from inferences that can be made without seeing your data. And so going back to the smoking example, suppose I opted out of being in that study and that study goes ahead and is published and it shows a new link between smoking and a particular disease. This doesn't protect me from the fact that my insurance premium might go up on the back of the study going ahead, even if I didn't opt in. And that's fairly obvious point, but it's an important observation. And any algorithm for generating synthetic data with differential privacy has to be proven to be private. And this is one of the barriers to adoption in that you have to have mathematicians who are able to actually formally prove that the algorithm satisfies this mathematical definition. I should say that I'm a mathematician and we do, we have a couple of mathematicians on the team. So in this space, we're really valuing sort of having that experience. But part of the team's work is to go, right, how can we create generic methods that can be used safely by teams where perhaps that maths element isn't there? And not all differentially private algorithms are equal. So there, I sort of suggested that we've got two algorithms at varying values of parameters. And at any value of parameter there, the pink one outperforms the blue one in some heuristic way. Going back to the explainability, another big positive for differential privacy is that all of the privacy is afforded by addition of noise. So you can always publish exactly what you subjected the data to. So whilst, so this really is useful to researchers to go, well, actually, now that I know how the noise was added, I know what information this definitely won't have attempted to maintain. And so that's a nice plus compared to other disclosure control techniques, which quite often we have to be really secretive about how we achieve disclosure control. So in practice, a bit about the sort of methods that we've been looking into. So a lot of our research is really focused on the outputs of the 2018 NIST Differential Privacy Synthetic Data Challenge, which is an online challenge to basically generate research in this area. And we're focusing on the top performing algorithms and looking at how you can apply them at scale to O N S data and what that would actually look like in practice. And I'm going to briefly sort of explain what this does look like and how this is achieved. So we start with a database and both of these methods have this in common. They start with a database. You select a collection of marginals, so just one-way tables or histograms and then some two-way tables. The methods do differ here. So the privacy method basically says we'll take all one-way marginals and all two-way marginals. McKenna does something a bit different and picks some higher order ones. But ultimately, that step is just picking what tables you want to retain. You then add noise that, so not just any old noise. This is where the maths comes in of exactly how much randomness do you add? And what type of randomness, and I won't go into that here. But you basically keep your tables but with noisy entries. And two observations about those noisy entries. First of all, you'll see that they're now continuous rather than nicely binded. And also that in the bottom right example, we've now got a negative count of data there. And this is one of the sort of oddities perhaps of working with differently private data. And then, and this is where the two methods disagree again, but roughly do the same thing. They take those marginals and now reconstruct an entire database from those noisy tables. And then we can safely publish the noise database. And one of the nice features of differential privacy is again that any post-processing of a differentially private data set inherits the same privacy controls. So you can do anything to that data once you've prioritized it. So actually, rather than releasing the synthetic database, we could actually just release the synthetic contingent of tables as well. Because it's at that point that we've achieved privacy and so we could provide both. And as said, our research is really looking at these at scale and comparing it to some historic work that the campus has done. The campus has been really at forefront of synthetic data for a number of years. And some previous work we've done on using generated adversarial networks and seeing how that compares. And importantly, the work with GANs, we have no theoretical reason to believe that it is private. We can't prove that that work is private, whereas this has that opportunity that we can really put some definition of privacy to work. So I'm going to talk through the case study that we've looked at. So we're currently using the, or we have used, the Census Microdata Teaching File. So this is a 1% sample of the person records from the 2011 census in England, Wales. And it's published by the O N S to encourage the use of census data beyond the aggregate information that the O N S puts out. And to introduce data users to the detailed data. So that might be researchers so that they can get familiar with the data in case they want to apply to use it. Or it might be schoolchildren first being taught statistics and having an opportunity to work with a data set that they'll know that they're a part of and feel connected to. So this is just an example on the right-hand side of the information that's held in that file. It's around 570,000 records and it has 17 fields. And of those fields, the one with the most complexity has 13 factor levels. So it's not a massive data set, but it's a really good training data set for us to use internally because the data size is large enough not to be insignificant, small enough that it doesn't take days and days to run algorithms against it. And it also has the big benefit that ultimately when we're publishing our outputs on this work, as well as providing the code, sorry, as well as writing papers, sort of the outputs in the context of more sensitive data that we're working with, we'll be able to provide the code for actually reproducing the work on the 1% teaching file because you all already have access to it. So you'll be able to really get stuck in with using the tools that we're producing straight away. So I've spoken a bit about how we generate synthetic data. And then the question is, well, how do we know that the data is useful? And what is the definition of useful? So that's where evaluation comes in. And the graph here, or the couple of graphs here, show the outputs against the Census Teaching File using the privacy method with epsilon equals one, which is sort of the standard figure that people choose. And the top is the one-way histogram for, I think it's region. Apologies for not including that. And you can see that at least to the eye, the two data sets are pretty much indistinguishable. So with epsilon equals one on this size of data set, what we're saying is that one-way histograms are essentially exactly the same. And remember that epsilon equals one is really the sort of, this is pretty safe, is the industry sort of way of thinking. And the second graph there shows the two-way correlations of all of the variables. So the one on the left-hand side is the correlations in the original data. The one on the right-hand side is correlations in the synthetic data. And you can see again by eye that most of the correlations are pretty similar. So again, we would say that this method has retained two-way interactions to a high degree of accuracy. And that's no surprise because privacy does take as its collection of marginal tables, all of the one-way and all of the two-way marginals. The range of methods for evaluating sort of similarity. And these graphical ones, there are also sort of standard numeric ways, things like Jensen Shannon divergence, distance, Kullback-Gleiber divergence. And they have sort of theoretical definitions, though I won't even attempt to go into those. And I will refuse to answer any questions that you have about finding them on the spot. But utility is also context-specific. So that's a generic notion of how useful is the data? But you also want to know, well, how useful is it for the particular research question that I'd have? And so that requires bespoke methods. And the work that we're currently doing, which I'll talk about on the next slide, sort of addresses that. And the outputs you've just seen here are created with the package synth gauge that we recently published. So that's now available for anyone to use on, you need to go to GitHub. Or you can find the recent blog posts that the campus put out announcing that package. And if you do find yourself using it, we'd really appreciate feedback. So next steps, what we're currently doing is synthesizing a much more important data set, which is the linked data of all the nearly 6 million rows of census data to the mortality data set that has information about the recorded deaths. So this is an incredibly sensitive and highly useful data set. It's got 60 million rows, 100 fields, and some of those have up to 1,000 factor levels. So that's the cause of death field. We're synthesizing it using a range of methods and then we're evaluating it using the tools that I showed on the previous slide. But we're also evaluating it by putting this through a pre-existing O N S data pipeline to calculate the mortality rates by age, gender and ethnicity. And the hope from that is really to see when you subject this to an actual analytical question, how much of that final output is retained as a proxy of what a researcher might be interested in. And we're hoping to release that to researchers with lower accreditation requirements than the current SRS process. Beyond this work, the next stage will be to identify high-profile, high-demand O N S data sets that we can synthesize, so starting to synthesize more of the O N S catalog so that it's not just one data asset that's made available. And for some of the data, the current methods won't be suitable. So we know that time series data and network data, where you've got correlations between rows effectively in your data set, aren't captured by the methods we're currently looking at. So we'll start to look at what you have to do to achieve differential privacy or privacy for those data sets. And I guess that brings me to the end, but it also brings me to a question to this audience. So to come back, thank you for staying with me. But ultimately, this is all about the toolbox. And so the real question is, what would you prioritize? We are choosing which data sets we want to synthesize next. We haven't made any firm decisions. And so if this work has inspired you and if you think I want to see synthetic data in economics data, then let me know your ideas and that's the best way for us to work out where to go next. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Harry. That was fantastic, really, really interesting methods. And again, continuing the theme of bringing things right to the frontier of what's going on in data science and actually applying them for the public good, which is what we're all about. So fantastic. And also, you claimed not to be pitching to economists, then you had a graph showing a trade-off. So actually, I think you did pretty well on that as well.
Shows how little I know about you guys.
Let's go to some questions now last.
Ashley would be a great. My question I have, that example you showed, if it also had income and 99.9% of people had income less than a million and then there were 0.1% who had a billion or a trillion pounds income, how would that affect the differential privacy curve? Give an intuition of how that might affect it? And would it be a good idea then to top cool those people?
Yeah, it is a really good question. And I think importantly, differential privacy has limitations. And one of the limitations is to where you've got small counts, long tails, you have to lose information there. And it's just one of the limitations. And again, it's part of the reason why we are saying at this point, we're really interested in using this for getting you started with using the data and so you can write your pipelines quickly. And if you know to expect that type of thing, then at least you know that the data can't be expected to show that pattern.
Yeah, that's a great question. Someone else had that, Russell? Brilliant, okay, great, we took that off.
Yeah, hi, thanks for the talk, very good. I have a question, it's not really related to the differential privacy, but are O N S interested in federated learning? And kind of not necessarily disclosing data, but allowing people to run models on the data and return the outputs of those models directly whilst retaining privacy?
Yeah, so thank you, because this goes back to the very first slide with the name of the talk. So the team that I lead has two parts. So part, the part in collaboration with Turing is really focusing on synthetic data and privacy of synthetic data. The other half is looking at P E T, so privacy enhancing technologies more widely. And so there we are looking at how we can use the upcoming I D S to do federated learning. So for those who are not familiar with federated learning, this is a different model. Whereas instead of taking data into the O N S and saying, we are a trusted curator of all of the data and then we'll do some analysis on our machines, you actually say, we will never touch your data ourselves. That can stay over there, we will run our algorithms in a cloud federated way, where the algorithm interacts with both systems and then returns the results of the analysis. So it's quite a different approach. And particularly where we're sharing data internationally, this has massive potential. And at the moment, a lot of the work in this space is proof of concept because, again, there's a lot of, I shouldn't say bureaucracy, but there is a degree of bureaucracy whenever you're introducing a new technology. And so we're working with the UN PET Lab, which has representations from across the UN NSOs and working with public trade data, but combining it in a federated way to get outputs, just to prove the concept that we can share data internationally. And that might also work with things like the Police National Computer. So not in an international setting, but it may be impossible for us ever to get Police National Computer data anywhere other than there. But maybe we can start using federated learning to share data, get insights.
Annabelle.
So one of the concerns I've heard about synthetic data is it might be used by private sector companies just to evade all sorts of data regulations. At the moment, you're talking about it from an O N S point of view and you're still giving it to people with lots of, so some degree of accreditation, even if it's a lower level. And you mentioned that each differential privacy method you mathematically prove. But for the potential for it to be used in a widespread way, do you think you would ever trust a private company that said, this is fine? This is synthetic and it's fine? Or do you think there are limitations in that regard?
It's a really interesting question and one that I think is tough to answer. I think to a great extent, I don't know the extent unless G D P R or regulatory instruments start putting limitations on where synthetic data could be used. I think there's an extent to which we're all going to find ourselves doing what what private companies think is best. And we're already seeing, as I say, so Google, the mobility data, Facebook, these are all the places where differential privacy was invented. Cynthia Dwork is from Microsoft Research. So this is very, very driven in the private sector. Just one thing you mentioned about the, where is the data being released? I think it's a really important factor as well, that I don't think the message should be, yes, we can now release this data and just put it on the web. Differential privacy allows us, we could choose to do that, but that isn't necessarily a good idea. Because the example is suppose we decided to make available a completely synthetic version of the census and just put it on the web as a replacement to a teaching file. You know, now you can work with a teaching file which is 60 million rows and treat it like the real population. The risk then is that that data set gets shared and it gets put on Kaggle's database of lots of interesting data sets and it gets shared around the internet. And somewhere along the lines, the disclaimer that this is not real data gets lost. And suddenly you start getting research that's based on a synthetic data set with no disclaimer and you've lost sort of your own intellectual property of the information.
Yeah, there's a parallel there to some of the deep fake stuff, right? Except for this case, obviously, it's much more useful than that. But once you've got very, very convincing looking data sets out there, they could go and be used in all kinds of ways. More questions from the floor or from online? Yes.
It's just a curiosity, actually. Do you have lawyers or regulators in this project that you can talk to, right, to assess along the lines of?
So not yet.
In other words, this has a huge impact on regulation, on privacy regulation and so on. And I was wondering whether there's any multidisciplinary interaction within this project that allows to, you know, discuss these issues.
Thank you for the question, because this is a really important challenge about actually, I mean, I had the word hope, hoping to release, that's a bit pessimistic. And if I'd seen my slides and been able to edit them this morning, I would have changed that to will be or at least something more committal. The, I think we need to move in that direction. I think the challenge is working out where responsibility lies. So my team, and I've only recently joined and tried to really get us focusing on the, let's get this in use, rather than the, let's see how you actually do it and the research element. So we're starting that thinking. There's a big question of, is that my responsibility as a synthetic data creator? Is it the original information asset owner's responsibility to worry about the privacy? Or is it the platform's responsibility? And as you say, legal is definitely another party to that. So we're just starting to scope out how you even attack that problem for an organization like the O N S. But thanks for the question.
Right, any more questions? Any questions on any of the three papers that people want to come back to at all? No, well, listen, I think this has been a fantastic session and has really delivered on showing us how bringing in things right from the frontier. I mean, some of those papers. I mean, some of those papers are from the last couple of years and we're already seeing them put into practice. I think we've really seen that. So I think we should give a big thank you to all of our speakers for three fantastic talks.